I expect everyone to be punctual.
Ross is looking for your technical assistance.
Thank you.
Are we good?
That's what she's saying, passing the word.
I haven't done this.
Oh, she's waiting.
This is a hot mess. My first night out and we got a hot mess.
We're really sorry.
I'm trying to sabotage you. I heard you after you done it.
All right, now. Okay, now you can start over.
Can I ask? All right. This is January 9th, 2018, 5:30 p.m., municipal city council work session. I'll just meeting order. And then quickly turn it over to Ron Chandler.
Okay. So this is a follow-up from our last meeting three weeks, month ago or so, in which we were discussing the sewer projects, the 15-year sewer plan. There were a few things that came up. And one of those, probably perhaps the biggest thing that we wanted to discuss tonight, was the money end of the finance. So we've got a lot of scenarios to walk through. What we're really looking for you tonight are more of your cringes than your yahoo log. This is great. Because we're trying to establish where you don't want to go, where you do want to go. And you'll see as we go through these worksheets, there are many, many variations to these different scenarios. Final numbers in these scenarios aren't as important as the direction that they would send the city. The other thing that we're looking to get from you tonight is that if you're comfortable, as we mentioned in our last meeting, we'd like to take this on the road a little bit and to start talking with the residents about this and to start getting their input. We've tried to create these worksheets so that they're a little bit interactive, so that you can change the numbers and get different scenario, people can ask questions. So also, one other thing that I need to point out, we are not on TV, California, so probably you can't stream it. And we don't have to go, we are not broadcasting on John's court. Okay. Any questions before we get started? Okay.
Mr. Chen?
Yeah.
Can I ask that I want to speak up just a little bit because I can't really hear anyone because I have a microphone, so I can't hear anything out there.
Are these ones on?
They're only recording, they're not.
Mr. Chen.
They don't, you can't hear it out there.
Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a little more difficult when you hear what I'm saying.
Okay. I'm using the screen tonight mostly for people who may be streaming this. You have all printed copies of this and we'll, and so we're really working off of your printed copies. They're the same as what's on the screen. Worksheet one, we actually have 20 worksheets to work our way through tonight, and they are in clumps. So worksheet one is the list of capital projects that you had received before. I did not include any of the descriptions in them. We did not plan on spending a lot of time on a discussion of the project. We felt that you had a pretty good handle on that. We really wanted to spend the time on the money end of it.
Mr. Chandler, I neglected to do a roll call.
Oh, okay.
So I guess I thought Kathy did that, but I'll just, I'll start from there.
All right. Debbie Mamon, finance.
Ron Chandler.
Bible Brown.
Dick Anderson.
T.N.A.
Riley Oakwood.
Susan Hawkeye.
Judy Casper.
Anthony Porter.
Charles.
So anyways, if you recall, the total, we had these divided into three groups, and the total was $21 million, $235,000. One other thing that you asked us to do was to separate the costs that would be for those that are increasing the capacity of the sewer versus those that could be reoccurring for their repair types of costs. So we created two scenarios for that. If you go to worksheet two, the first scenario that we looked at were those things that are replacements, repairs, and versus those at increased capacity. But included in the increased capacity, we looked at the project and said, are these sufficiently large that we may not be able to do without debt? That gives us a good thing to look at, to measure as we look at the rest of the way. So you'll see, when we look, when we identified the projects on this one way, we came up with $6.2 million that would be based on maintenance or a rebuild or repair, replace type of a thing, and $15 million that are capacity building. And then if you go to worksheet three.
Could you explain what capacity is? I'm sorry.
Do you want to say that?
Sure. That's increasing a line size, so it has more capacity.
Okay.
And that falls for.
Or increasing the pump's capacity.
So that would follow each population group.
So pump station lines or dewatering.
Okay.
And then the third worksheet, we looked at, we said, we're not going to create an artificial number that we should say is too much, or we just said, what is, what is capacity versus the maintenance? And in this case, they just about reverse themselves. The capacity would be 7.2 million, and the maintenance would be 14 million. Now, all of the other scenarios that you're going to see tonight build off of these three worksheets. Okay? So is there any questions about these before we really start getting into the numbers? Okay, let me bring out the other worksheets then. So the first, let me pass these out.
Can I have the papers still on?
Yeah, if we can. I'll start passing these out. I've got two of those. You want to send those around? You've already got a copy.
But do you want to do it?
Oh, yes, yes. Go ahead and send those around. Thank you.
No, I, I'm sure.
If you got one paper, would you get a rate?
Yeah, I did. No, no, I did not.
It's okay.
Yes, there is.
I can't see. How's that?
I think they need a little bit more. If you can do these ones, that's probably good. While she's, while she's doing that, then worksheet four was also, we wanted to look at all of the debts that the city has. That was in the first batch, it's a loan sheet. So to look at worksheet four, you wanted to look at all of the debt that we, that the city has, including future debt, such as police building. We have, we have six debt measures, three that are in sewer, three that are in water. A couple of things to point out on this, that you'll note that on the 2013 sewer, we are going from $351,050 in 2019 to $958,450. The reason for that is that the first few years of that debt was interest only, and that the principal started, the payments start to be made in 2020, 19 and 20. So that's why you see the increase in that.
And did we only pay the interest then?
Yes.
We didn't?
We did not pay extra on the principal. We did pay some other debts down around this one.
No, it's as per schedule.
Why would you have an interest-only debt? What was the reason?
I'm going to let Debbie answer that question.
This, this has to do with some refunding, a bond refunding that Ron already did. So there's one debt structure that ends in 1819, and so it was to even out the payments so that 1819 would have quite a bit higher payment than how yours. This is sewer 2015.
And 15 retirements.
It just smoothes out payments. So it was intentionally structured this way.
Sure. It's not much different.
Right, right. It's totally the same.
And then if you look at this.
Tax rates aren't going like this.
If you look at the sewer, I'm sorry, we have four. One is the sewer inter-fund loan. The rest are, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The sewer has one more, which is an inter-fund loan, which ends this year. Then you have three that are within the water fund. One is, one is expiring this year, one expires in 2019, and the third one expires in 2024. I would note that on the water, different from the sewer, is that these are paid through the rates and not through taxes, whereas the sewer is paid through the taxes.
Now, when you do the debt, so for example, 2007 water with $429,47, is, is that the original amount borrowed, or is that what's left open?
That's what's left open.
Okay.
And so you can see that without any further debt, we go from a high of $2.8 million this fiscal year down to $1 million in 2030. We didn't carry it beyond, beyond that point.
2030 is the last year of any more scheduled debt, so if I had added one more column, it would have all been zero. All right, just, yes.
Now, it's important also to remember that we deal with fund balances, or funds, fund accounting, fund budgeting, and so that sewer doesn't necessarily get to pay for the water, vice versa. The general fund doesn't pay for it at all. Each fund is meant to be a self-balancing set of accounts. And so they have different revenue sources that are dedicated to the payment of their debt. Then you'll see that the next one we added, like the proposed police building, we are assuming a $10.5 million debt over 30 years at 4%. The total annual payment would be $607,000 for that. In that fund, I believe our total is about $800,000 per year that we receive as a bond.
Some of our.
Yeah.
And that's TR27.
It is. And that's the facility funds according to our charter that permits us to do this. Okay. So that's where we sit. As we again go through the scenarios, we'll revise this one to show you how the total debt is impacted. Again, one of the things that's really important is that while you know, well, noting the total impact is important, it really is more important as the different funds than it is your total debt, because that's what you're ultimately looking at, is the fund that has to pay for it. Okay, any questions on, on worksheet four? Okay. So worksheet five.
Ron, did you have a, what type of cash balance that we have?
Oh, on the sewer fund, you know what our cash balance is? Our, any fund balance?
In, in the bond fund or the operations fund?
Both, if you know that.
I just have to look it up.
If you want to.
Exactly.
If you want to.
I didn't mean, I just, I was curious.
I forgot.
I think, I think operations house, if I remember correctly, about $800,000.
Yes. If you recall, in our budget discussions from last year, we wanted to keep the utility fund at about a $600,000 fund balance, and all of them were a little bit higher than that. Eventually, over the years, they would drop to maintain themselves at about $600,000. Thank you. Okay. The bond fund generally does not have much of a fund balance because it transfers in and then it transfers out. Okay?
We, we levy to make the debt payment, and so we don't levy a lot more than the debt payment, so that fund balance stays.
The first, the first scenario that we're working from is worksheet five. And under this scenario, we look at the idea as a starting point of bonding for the entire project, the entire $21 million upfront. This is a good starting point, and it makes a great measuring stick to measure everything else against it. And as we get to the end, I have a comparison of all these scenarios that we'll run you through as well. So the assumption on this one is that it's a $21 million bond issued. It is 3%, and it's over 20 years. In this case, the, the annual debt payment would be one, a little more than $1.4 million, which would be funded entirely through taxes. That would be a general obligation bond under this worksheet five scenario. Under the first bold that you see down there, it says current bonds tax rate. That's the rate that we have now. It's .835, and you can see that goes down as our debt becomes retired in, in the sewer fund. If we were to go with this scenario, again, a 3% interest rate over 20 years, a new bond rate to pay for the $1.4 million would be .827, and that would go eventually down to .597 in 2030. And that would give us the revenue that's necessary to pay the bond. The reason why you see that go down is that we've also factored in a 3% increase each year of the assessed value.
Just to be clear, that's in addition to the current tax bond rate?
That would be in addition, yes. And so your total combined rate would be, would go from $1.66 per $1,000 of assessed value down to 99 cents. Now, the effect that that has on a $200,000 home is that under the current bond rate, the amount that is paid would be $166.98 per year, and the new bond rate would be $165.40 for a total amount of $332.38. Now, there's lots of variables in all of these worksheets. The amounts are variable, the interest rates are variable, the years of doing this is a variable, the increase in assessed valuable is a variable, and the cost on the assessed value is also a variable. As you'll know, one of the things that we've done in this, if you look up here, is that this is what we would do with the public, is that I can change this to a $500,000 house, and you can see the effect it would have on property. Okay. So it would take it on, if you, if you went from a 200 to a 500,000, it would take it from $332 to $831.
So on a bond is 21,000, or 21 million at 3%. What was, was the cost of the money?
Do you know the interest rate, the amount of total interest we would pay on these? I'm not. We, we have it. Over the line, yeah, over the line. Yeah. We didn't put that together.
That's included in the $1.4 million?
What is?
Yeah, so the $1.4 million is principal and interest.
Oh, no, we didn't separate that principal from the interest.
Okay. I thought I wasn't there.
Oh, no, it's included, yeah.
Any questions on worksheet five? If you go to worksheet six then, in this case, we looked at bond payment of $21 million, 3% interest over 20 years, being paid entirely by rates, rate increase. So what you're looking at on this is, and we have also built into this some of the operation, the proposed operation increases over that same time period. You're looking at $26.66 is our current base rate for sewer. The formula that we worked on is basically we have a surcharge that would be charged to every sewer connection, and in this case, it would be $10.66 for a total combined rate of $37.31. When you look at worksheet six, what you see then is the $319.91 is the annual rate for a, for the base rate, and then $127.87 for the new rate, giving you a total cost of $447.78. Now, again, one variable that, oh, one variable that's been added into this, that's important to note, is that these are based on the base rate, but the amount we did is actually based upon usage. So somebody's bill could be higher if they were using higher than the base amount. Now, as I mentioned, we will come back to showing the comparisons, but just to give you an idea of what you're looking at, if you hold up worksheet five and worksheet six together, you can see that the total cost of doing a $21 million debt through taxes on a $200,000 house is $332.38. And the total amount of doing it straight through rates is $447.78. If all the assumptions that we put in here held true, it's actually cheaper to do it through a bond. Okay. And then the final worksheet of this group is worksheet seven, which shows the debt schedule. In this case, your debt schedule.
Ron, what's the base rate based off of?
It's based off of water usage.
I understand that, but I mean, what's cap, what's the base rate amount of consumption, water consumption?
There's 400, there's 400 cubic feet allowance for the base rate.
400 cubic feet of water is the base, the water consumption?
This is, well, this is.
No, it is.
I'm asking. The base rate based off of?
Yes.
It's just the water.
For, for your base rate, you get 400 cubic feet of water usage. If that water usage goes up, then it changes your sewage fee up as well. So both the water and sewer are based on you.
I understand. And when, when was that created, and how was that created?
That was 2015 was the last SEC update that we.
Well, there was a rate study done that looked at what we charge for usage versus space, but the 400 cubic feet allowance has been in a long time, very, years and years.
So is that something that can be reinterpreted? I mean, it could look at and say, you know, okay, is that currently what it is, and is that, you know, something that is a base rate of 400 even something? Is it too much? Is it not enough?
Sure. It's a bit of, bit of a study, but yes.
Yeah, I mean, I understand it's probably going to be a lot of work, but if something has been for 20 years, it's 400 cubic feet, I don't know if that's a lot, or gallons, or whatever. I've no idea. So.
Okay.
I think, I don't know what the interest cost is.
You want?
So if you take 20, 20 payments of $1.4 million, you get 28.2 million, so the total interest would be 7.2. Over the 20 years.
How much would be?
7.2 million.
Is the interest cost?
Whoa. Over 20.
So.
But that's already built in to those of them.
Yes, it is built in, yes.
And then worksheet seven is, it just shows the total debt service schedule when you add both police building and the new sewer.
Is it different from worksheet four, how?
It is. It adds the $1.4 million to, to the future, future debt.
Could you do your same as you told me?
Put the please.
Yeah. I should.
Yeah, so I think a 607, 206, for 30 years, is 18.2 million, so minus 10.
Something like that.
That's about 7.7 million.
Should have optioned.
Now comes the fun part. This, this, all of this just kind of sets up the table for now looking at more of the kinds of scenarios. This is where we're really trying to pull from you, where you feel strongly about where you want to go as far as rates, where you want to go as far as how much debt, and everything in between on, on those.
We can go back to six. Where, you're saying that you're going to increase it 2% and then 3% of that new amount, and then 3% again from that previous year, and then 4% again, not maintaining 4%, but every year you're increasing it, period. That's what is projected, I guess. And that's, it has a personnel? Because I thought we're trying to work as far as a better way to handle our sewage, not necessarily increasing our costs by purchasing equipment.
We tend to project as much as we can, both accurately, but on the high side, the farther out that you get, the more leverage that you want to give yourself. But as you noticed, if you look back at our projections of five years ago, it was showing right now it's being 4, or next year it's being 4%. We're actually going to be proposing it as not increase. So we give that, we give ourselves both to be realistic, but also give ourselves some effort going down the road.
So then why does it go to 5% and then back to 4? You know?
I would like Debbie to answer that question.
So I have different expenses projected at different rates, and then the rate increase is what it is, try to keep the fund balance at $600, and so at 4%, it's eating into the fund balance a little bit, so the 5% gives it back again, and then the 4% gives it down. So it's just.
It seems like we could manage it better than increasing the rates of users versus, you know, some, you know what I mean? It's like, oh, well, you know, it goes up, we'll just charge you more, and then it'll go down, we'll charge you less.
It's, it's not that the expenses are going up, it's that we're, I probably could have made this evener by doing 4, doing longer.
But this, this doesn't, at first I thought this was a, a way to help with the sewer capacity, much like the water, not capacity, but the ability to future pay out of the rates.
Yeah, to have a rate support the capital needs of the fund, yes.
As, as the payment goes away, the bonds, we keep, have been jacketing up your rates, and keep those going, you know, okay, to make some ground, but not having a few bonds in future, and bonds to pay out of the sewer fund.
Didn't we just reduce all the sewer bonds to pay, didn't we, in the budget, didn't we take those funds out and to reduce, something about the sewer or the water?
We did.
We took out most of it and put it somewhere else.
We did have a new sewer fund to pay for some existing cap, to pay for an existing capital, the $2 million water line. We can transfer some money out of operations into the capital fund in this year, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, is that water? Well, we did, we did put water in.
Yeah. I mean, we took a significant amount, it was to where it was like a zero.
I don't think it's a check account.
I, I.
Some, some way to.
Yeah.
Okay. If you go to, I think we just handed out worksheets eight, nine, and 10. Won't you send those down, that right? I think you have them. We have, we're already.
I'm sorry. I do not.
Now, this is where we start really looking at worksheets two, worksheets three, on how do we separate capacity versus, versus maintenance types of projects. And what you will see as we go through these is that the bonds in these ones are all proposed to be paid through taxes, and the rates, or the, the capacity, I'm sorry, the capacity bonds are proposed to be paid through rates. The, or, let me check that, let me get my notes fixed up. The capacity projects are projected to be paid through bonds. The maintenance projects are projected to be paid through a pay-as-you-go. Okay?
Through rates.
Through rates, not through debt. So in worksheet eight, you'll note that the, if you're looking at the top worksheet, again, we're now looking at a $15 million bond. That is based on the numbers that you found in worksheet two, where we separated the capacity from the maintenance projects. we're now looking at a $15 million bond. That is based on the numbers that you found in worksheet two, where we separated the capacity from the maintenance projects. And the annual, and it's a 3% interest rate over 20 years, and the annual debt payment would be $1,808,000 roughly. In this case, again, you have the current tax rate, 0.835, eventually going to 0.395. You have a new bond tax rate of 0.591, eventually dropping to 0.427, for a combined tax rate of 1.43, down to 0.82 in year 2013. Okay? And your taxes associated with this on a $200,000 house would be 168, $6.98 on the current rate, $118.20 under the new tax bond, for a total of $285.18.
In the past, we have, you know, the three different sewers and the three different waters, those debts, the debts, did you say whether or not they were bonds or they were paid through the taxes?
The last worksheets we had were entirely bonds. Both scenarios were bonds, one paid through taxes, one paid through rates.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the six, the six, the six debts that we have right now.
Oh, okay.
The sewer ones are paid through taxes.
The sewer ones are paid through taxes, the water ones are paid through rates.
So, and then, do you have those amounts that they were initially? Like, how many millions of dollars for those? I mean, we're, what we're talking about is doubling, essentially doubling people's costs, and it would be nice to know that in 2011, it would double it, and 2013, it would double. I mean, is that a way?
The 11, and then 13, and then 15 were refinancing, so they weren't actually new debt obligations.
11 and 13, 11 and 15?
The 2011, or 2013, the 2015, they were just refinancing existing debt. But the original, the original bond cost?
We don't have that with us, but we'll send you.
I mean, just to compare what we're doing to our citizens, to what we've done before, and has this been done before? I mean, I have no idea, but...
Do you remember that last time we went off the bond?
It was 22 million.
22 million? Which, which makes sense because the tax rate's coming out about the same.
But that was, and that was for the sewer plan.
That was a plan, stations, and lines.
Sure, but it's...
These show, shown here are, it's a few we financed to lower the rate, so we took them.
Took them back.
We improved them.
Sure.
That was over 30 years, and this is 20.
So we still have 17 years left.
One of the reasons why we looked at a 20-year rate, just the idea that you're going to be repairing things, and if we can keep ourselves from having to repair stuff, significant replacement type of repairs that we're still paying a debt on, that's a preferable, so we try to shorten our time period of fixing it back. Okay? So again, if you're looking at worksheet eight, the total tax rate for a $15 million bond is $285.18. You add on to that, the total impact to your, to your users, is $6 million, which is pay as you go. So it's $6 million over 15 years. And what does that, how does that affect your rates? Again, if you're looking at, we need to generate about $400,000 in rate revenues to cover that kind of expense. If you're looking at your regular sewer rate operation of $26.66, a rate sewer, a rate surcharge to cover the projects of $3.02 for a total of $29.68. If you're buying rate then, it was $29.68. If you look at the cost, the end, that's the monthly cost, the annual cost then is $319.91 for the current rate, the additional $36.25 for the new rate, for a total $356.15. And so the combined effect on your, on your users would be 285.18 plus 356.15, $641.33 to that year.
That wouldn't be the increase, that would be...
That would be the total. And I, the very last worksheet that I have shows a comparison of all these scenarios that we're going through.
What's the purpose of the surcharge again?
It's to cover the projects. In this case, $6 million worth of projects, they are the maintenance type of projects.
But isn't the money supposed to cover the projects? I don't see, we're charging them, we're going to charge them, and also we're charging them again.
Charging them through taxes and through rates?
Right.
Yes, and the reason is that we've split it, we've split the payment method in two ways. One, instead of funding it all through rates or funding it all through taxes, this scenario has you're funding part of it through rates, part of it through taxes.
But it's, it's based on usage of water as well?
It is.
So if they use more water, then they're going to be charged more sewer also.
It is.
But not covering the projects, like, again, okay, I get that we have to cover projects, but using, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense that, I don't know.
Look, this, this is just a scenario. We split the 21 million into two parts.
Well, this is 15, no.
Then below it is, one is 15 million for bond, rates is to cover 6 million. See up on the corner?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is the same?
Right, it's just another scenario of the same 21.
Now I see what you're saying.
Training how you want to take your medicine.
Now I see the difference between, all right.
Thank you.
Wow. Temperature. I mean, we should all go to...
And then worksheet 10 is the debt schedule based on this scenario. So you'll see that we increased the debt by $1,800,000. So the first year, your total debt and debt payment is $3,721,000, or almost $3,728,000. Now, what we're dealing with is the concept that for maintenance projects, we're not going into debt. Okay? And so the total amount becomes what is maintenance versus what is capacity. And again, under this scenario, I looked at and said, these ones are just so big, we don't know that we can afford it by rates, so let's look at it with taxes. Then the next set of worksheets deals it with if it is maintenance, if it only paid by rates without debt, if it is, and capacity would be the part that's paid through. Okay. Numbers make sense to me, if they can. So, side story, side story. Math started making a lot of sense to me when I tied it to money, and after that started becoming fun, to the point I wasn't any fun. Okay, all right. The next scenario, which is scenario three, again divides the project, this is really tying back to worksheet three, in which the capacity projects total $7 million, and we would pay for those through taxes. Okay? And when I, and so far, when I'm referring to these as taxes, it is a general obligation bond, it would require a vote. Your, and that would be 7 million at 3% for 20 years. The projects that are maintenance would be paid as you go, not through debt, and it is $14 million divided by 15, over 15 years. So in this case, your yearly debt payment is $470. And, and your yearly revenue that is necessary to cover the rate portion of it is $933,000. So under the taxes in worksheet 11, your current bond rate again is 0.835. Your new bond tax rate is 0.276, giving you a combined tax rate of $1.11 per thousand of assessed value, dropping eventually down to 59 cents in 20 fiscal year 2030. The amount that you would pay on a $200,000 house would be $166,098 for the current tax rate, $55.20 for the new bond tax rate, for a total of $222.18. Now, again, by comparison's sake, you can see that under the worksheet eight, when you look at worksheet eight with worksheet 11, when you were financing $15 million, the tax impact was $285.18. The tax impact here is $222.18. Okay? Worksheet 12, that is the worksheet that deals with the $14 million divided over 15 years, in which you need $933,000 in revenue. You have your current operations in 2019 of $26.66, and you would have a surcharge for the new sewer rate, sewer rate of $7.05 for a combined rate of $33.71 per month. Okay? So the total impact then would be at the current rate of 300, the annual impact would be $319.91, and the new rate would be $84.62 for $404.52. And again, comparing that against worksheet nine, where you were bonding for more and paying less, you'll note that this is now $404.52 versus $356.52. If you compare the two, on worksheet, on the scenario where you had higher amount of bond, the annual amount that you would pay both in taxes and rates of $641.33 for that first year, and under the second scenario where you pay more in rates and you own bonds, it would be $626.71, so roughly $15 less. Okay? And then worksheet 13 shows the debt service schedule under this scenario, in which you're going up by $470,510.
And we're 13, that's your last one, right?
Yes. Any questions about that scenario? We're getting towards the end. Now, in the next scenario that we looked at, and you want to put a four, I actually divided this into two groups, scenario when we compare them. In this case, what we looked at in scenario four was that instead of doing a large bond all up front, we stagger it over three payments, each being paid for eight years. So in other words, the first payment debt would start in 2018, 19. It would require a debt payment of $997,000. That would continue for eight years. Beginning year five, you would incur another debt of $997,000 for a $7 million eight-year debt. And then in year 10, you begin another one. One drops off, another one begins, and that is $997,000 for again another $7 million debt. In this case, you have four years where it's one debt, eight years where it's two, and then four years where it's one debt again. Now, under this rate, or under this method, again, while we're looking at taxes, it would be a general obligation bond. You would then be, you've got a couple scenarios, I'll kind of deal with that. You can do one general obligation bond vote for $21 million, but spend it over three different issues. Or you can have three separate general obligation bonds. Or you can divide this again and do it into two, and have two separate general obligation bond votes.
What's the benefit of multiple rollouts of...
The benefit of doing one, in which you then borrow over three separate periods, you have one vote. That means you only have one opportunity to win or to lose. Doing it over three, you have to go through three separate votes, which are three opportunities to win or to lose. Now, it could be that doing a smaller amount is an easier pill to swallow. Doing a smaller amount three different times is an easier pill to swallow than doing one amount just once.
Kind of think you get one shot at it.
Under this scenario, when you're looking at the, when you're looking at the debts, you can see that on a $200,000 house, and I'm just going to give the total on this one, it would be $283,000, $283.98 in the first year. Beginning in 2023, that would jump to $374. It peaks at, that's a peak, and then it finally drops down to $247.76. And that reflects, and that reflects that you're paying just one debt, two debts, one debt.
Although, that last one is still two, so it'd be 2031.
Yes, yeah, we didn't carry it up yet.
Right, I just said maybe zero.
Now, under scenario, or under the same scenario with worksheet five, or worksheet 15, in this case, we changed a little bit, and instead of doing a pay-as-you-go, we instead said, what happens if we do a bond, but pay for it all out of rates? Okay? So in this case, again, you're looking at a $7 million debt, 3% interest, payment period is eight years, and it's staggered over three separate bonds. You're, you're funding it through rates, again, you start with your 26.66 base rate. You're going to add on to that $7.53 as your surcharge, giving you a total of $34.19 per month. The total cost of that, again, looking at the total, was $410.25 annually. That peaks at $590, $610, $627.35, and then drops off when you go back to one rate. So under this case, again, you're looking at the bonds. Now, these would be revenue bonds, which means that a vote is not required with the revenue. What you are doing is pledging $7.53 of your rates to the repayment of these bonds. And then on worksheet 16, you're looking at, again, the debt service schedule under this scenario, and it begins at $3.7 million for the first year. Any questions on that? Okay, now... Okay, now, the final thing that we wanted to look at, and this is just...
Is it, I think there, that you went to 24% on the 2022, on 15? worksheet 15, is this provide increase, or the rate increase in 2022? It goes to 24%?
No, because you're going from adding $7 to your rate to adding $15 to your rate, because you're going to make a payment on one bond to making a payment on two bonds, so you're doubling the bond payment.
So, you go, like, you're doubling the bond payment, you're going from 2% to 24%? And that's, and that's to cover the cost of operation costs?
No, that's, that's a combined.
You know, earlier I had asked, you know, the rate increase, and that was to cover the offset of the construction costs? And I just, trying to apply that to this, keeping all the same things applied. I just don't see why you go, you know, 34.99 or 43, is that, is that 24%?
Yeah.
It is? Oh, and then it's a 2% on top of the 24%, so it's 26%, 29% increase, okay. I gotcha. It's just, it's just crazy to me, we're just increasing every year. So, it goes to 2%, and then it goes 24%, and then third year, from 2021 to 2023, is a 26% increase.
Well, it's a 2% increase in the prior year, but if you're looking from today...
Well, if I'm looking from today, it's, you know, 1 plus 2 plus 24 plus 2. I mean, in five years' time, we're increasing it 30, you know, 30%. So, I'm just, just so that I'm clear.
Yes, this is a year-to-year change.
Okay. Worksheet 17 looks at... Worksheet 17 and 18 and 19 look at doing all of the projects on a pay-as-you-go, no debt. So, it's $21 million. It's spread out over 15 years. Because it is no debt, you would not be paying for it with taxes. And so, you can see that there is no increase in, in your bond rate on worksheet 17. There's no new bond tax rate. And so, the total amount that you would pay in taxes is your current amount, which would be $666.98. Worksheet 18 is that the $21 million is going to be paid entirely through rates. And then there's no debt associated with it. And so, you start again with, we need to raise $1.4 million in revenue. You have your $26.66 base rate, current rate, and then you add $10.57 to cover, this says, I'm sorry, this says new bond. It's not a bond. It's to cover the projects, the sewer rate projects, giving you a total monthly amount of $37.23, and then a combined annual total of $446.75. And then worksheet 19, again, is the debt schedule. As you can see on this one, the addition that you would have in the future is always... Okay, I have one final worksheet that hopefully ties all of this together. Okay. So, this is a comparison. What we did is we picked one year. In the case, this year we picked just 20, 22, 23. The reason is that under, under the scenario where we had paid it at a different time, we wanted to make sure we had the both debt payments, so the highest amount of debt that we would have. Under our current scenario, you have your tax rate, .833. I already seen error on that. A point, a 0.833. And where it says $1.57, that should say .0833. You have a, an annual cost of $166.58. Your current sewer operations rate is $28.29. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's not that. Yeah, that's a 23, yes. Your current operating expense base rate is $28.29 in 22, 23. We're looking off year 22, 23. So, if you look on worksheet 18... Yeah, you look up worksheet 18 and go to sewer rate operations. It states $28.29.
Well, it says that on all of them.
It does. It does. I just picked one. It says it on all of them. That incorporates the increase that you see over 1% here. That gives you a... Actually, it's 20, 29. Your total, and your total amount is, your total annual amount is $339.46. When you add the two together, your total charge, so this is no projects being done at all, is $506.4 per year. Okay? Any questions?
Well, I've got some too much.
In this case, what I'm doing on this one is just starting from a point where it says, no projects. No debt for projects, no, no pay-as-you-go for projects. This is just to give me a way to compare it, so you can look at the type of increases that you're going to see.
But you said sewer rate doesn't, it's not including sewer operations or...
It includes the current bond tax rate of .833, which...
Well, that's 2023.
That's right.
Why, why use that, you know?
Because that is the year in which you have, under scenario, scenario 4, you have both debt payments when you stagger. So, look to, look to worksheet 14.
So, that 166.58 includes...
The 166.58 is the payment on the existing debt that you have now.
You take the point, 833 times 200,000 divided by 1,000, that's your current debt stake.
That's the, that's the 1.936 million divided by 12? Is that what you're, is that what you're telling us? That's that amount? No. Trying to find, where do you have it shown at 2023, which is our current thing, what they would be paying per month?
It's not shown, it's not shown anywhere on there. What I, that, what I'm looking at is, this one doesn't show on any of the worksheets. It just gives me a base to measure the impact of all of the other scenarios. So, in other words, you have to, you have to begin from a point where there's no projects being done, so you can compare the scenarios.
But you didn't give us any of that information.
You didn't need it up until this point. It's not, we're not going on the assumption we're not going to do anything.
But, but we are. You're using it for this purpose.
Only for the purpose to be able to measure the impact from here of each scenario. It's like saying, it's like saying 5, 5 plus y equals something, okay? If you leave out the 5, then all you have is the y, and you don't have anything to go with it.
It feels like you're putting a Toyota with a bunch of Mercedes payments. I mean, that just doesn't seem the right way.
Not standing alone, not in 2023. Every scenario in 2023 has a tax rate change or a, or a rate change.
Well, 70 and 18, which was the year you look at.
It would be 39, right?
Can you look at worksheet 17 under 22, 23? Because your total taxes is 166.58, which is on the sub-sheet. And you look at worksheet 18, which has...
No, you can't look at that.
Well, it's the first line.
Anyways, the reason for this, I've just got to be at a point where I can say, here's the effect. So, when you look at this, the difference that you see at the very bottom, that's the most important number, okay? So, scenario one, if you recall, was all projects, 20 million, 21 million dollar upfront bond, paying with taxes. And, let's see, the, paying with taxes and with the rates. So, on this one, you look at, you add .833 plus the new bond rate of .827.
The worksheet 5, which you can tell from the new sheets, is if you pay everything with taxes, you've got taxes and rates added together. So, your second column, scenario one, scenario one has two scenarios. One where it's paid just by taxes and one where it's paid just by rates.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And you're adding, yeah.
Okay, so, I'll ask you where. So, in this case, I'm sorry for the mistake. In this case, what you're looking at is scenario A, one A and one B, okay? A is your first part. That's everything being paid, $21 million being paid entirely in taxes. And the other is $21 million being paid entirely in rates. And so, the total cost through the taxes was $313. So, you'll see a... $146.96 increase between the current and scenario one.
Yeah, this got all screwy.
Yeah, it looks like I did some kind of picture. The second part on the, that's when you look down at the bottom, it's dealing with rates. You have a $467 amount minus the current amount of $349.46, which would give you $127.87. That would be the annual increase would be to your residence under that scenario. I think I got the rest of them right, okay?
But you did that, you did that in everyone. You used the total, you know, for, for scenario two, you used the 375, for the 271. But you're telling us to take, but you're telling us to take away that?
Scenario 4, scenario 2, I do, I do not think I made a mistake on this one. If, if, scenario 2 had a combination of taxes and rates...
Scenario one probably should have been two scenarios, or I've been less confusing.
Yeah, that's, that's what I did.
In hindsight.
In hindsight. Scenario 2, you had a, you had a .833 in your tax rate plus .525 for the new bonds. This was the $15 million bond issuance. So, a total tax rate of $1.36. That gives you a total tax bill of $271.60.
Right.
Okay? You also have rates paying for some $6 million in projects. The total cost of that, annual cost, is $375.71. When you combine the two together, it's $647.31, or $141.27 more than the $506.40.
Sure, but then you go to scenario 14 and 15, which is... Which is scenario 4A, and you put 374 in 18, but you didn't put the 520 there. You put 339, which is what you did for scenario one. We were supposed to take out the 127 from the rates, you know?
Scenario one actually should have been split into two, by comparison. So, disregard that one at this point, because it should have been split into two, like I did for A and 4A.
Can you tell us what it would be, so that we have that? I mean, disregard it, it's something I...
Well, I can bring that back.
It wouldn't just be, I mean, minus 127 off the tax rate? And then another one that would be minus, it would be minus 146, but plus 127. That's not, that's not what we would do?
1A would be 146.
96.
1B would be 127.87.
Right.
Right.
And 1B is very, very similar to scenario 5, because they're both purely rates. The reason there's a difference is because one you're bonding, one you're not, you're paying as you go.
So, that's where you put the 520, so it'd be the exact same thing. You put 374 in 4A, 1A would be that, and then 1B would be that, okay?
Okay, so, scenario, scenario 3, I'll just go straight to the bottom. The difference, in this case, your, your, the bonding amount was for 7 million, and the rate amount was for 14 million in projects. And so, your difference is $133.66, okay? Scenario 4A is everything paid... Does that pay as you go?
That's the three bonds paid.
Uh, yeah. That's the staggered one, yes. So, 4 is staggered, with, with the 4A being paid entirely by taxes. So, you can see that's a $207 increase above the current. And 4B is being paid entirely by rates. And four B is being paid entirely by rates, which is a hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents. That's a, both are, both are the bonding on that.
So basically, worksheet fourteen is four A and worksheet fifteen is four B.
Yeah, essentially, yeah, 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 yes. And then scenario five is paying everything through pay-as-you-go, no debt. And you can see that the increase on that one in twenty twenty-three is a hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Okay. We have loaded you guys with a lot of numbers and a lot of scenarios. And there are many, many more scenarios that can come out of this. But there's a few concepts that are the big concepts that we really need to get from you as to... So we have the direction that we, we want. The first thing that you talked about last week was, was paying for maintenance projects through rates. And in the scenarios that we've given to you, we've given both through debt and through, and through a pay-as-you-go. There's two questions in there on this one. Do you want to pay for the maintenance types of projects through rates? And then the second question is, do you want to pay them through debt or just through pay-as-you-go?
Well, well, in the past, we had a few of it, but here are a lot of these factors. You guys are no longer with us, so there's a cut in your cash inflow.
Are we going to be discussing a new urban renewal district soon?
Not, not the same map.
A new, a new urban renewal district, are we going to be discussing that?
Yes.
And none of these projects will follow.
You've got only two projects in that district.
So we don't know what that district did.
It's not going to be one or one.
It takes, it takes a while for your base to build up to actually have any money to push in. You know, we know you have the money because unless you have fantastic growth in your success value.
So my, my understanding of a bond measure would be to buy or if you had to do a water treatment plant, a one-time big expense, or a police station, a one-time big expense. But most of these, those here are cost of operations and they're repetitive because they're predictable. And if you can't pay those today, you're not going to be able to pay them tomorrow with a non-payment. I just, I think that we've got a, my own feeling is that looking at the new water treatment plant, there might be five million, seven hundred thousand if you decided that you even wanted the sewage treatment and you wanted to go for a better one. The rest of it to me is just cost of operations, which should just come out of the normal course of business. And, and I, you know, maybe, I don't know, first budget this comes out of, but maybe we need to go on a diet. We don't figure out a way to see if we need all these things replaced. Because you're gonna, these water pumps, you do one, you're gonna have one next year as well. I mean, they're, they're very predictable and we can put money aside for those things. And that goes for most of these things. So, you know, my opinion is, is that we need to go on a diet and figure out what this wish list, what we really have to have. And, and then the big question to me is, do we want to go with a water treatment plant? Like it's been proposed, or do we just want to buy a backup centrifuge? We just want to buy a backup centrifuge, it's something on five hundred thousand dollars. If you want to go for the groundwater for the sewage treatment, it's five million dollars. So that's fine now, let's just put whatever that's worth. You don't put your electric bill on time, you can't pay it this much, you're not going to be able to pay it next month plus interest. I think that's where we are here.
I think there's a breaking point about how, what the threshold is for rates that maybe we go out of in that direction too.
Well, one city council back in nineteen eighty-six over rates got all recalled except for one person. Now this town can be very sensitive to rates.
In all fairness to that, and that, that's a truism. It was because no rate increase for a long period of time and all deferred. I think councils passed since then. That's why you see percentage increases in rate silvers, it's a slow climb. I would say it doesn't appear like it's been a high enough climb because we haven't increased like the water rate silvers.
But we are at that point now where it's just something to keep in mind. It's not a truism. And when they get their pitchforks and flames going, they're not listening to anyone.
Oh, I understand, but I have to give more. The story wasn't just because we woke up one day, cited the rates, the rates of sewer. It's they had deferred maintenance for a year.
Yeah, and it wasn't even that council that had committed it.
So.
So I guess, what I'm still, I'm still kind of with that first question. Do you want to separate the projects between maintenance and capacity? Again, all of this is for the purpose of making the tape is out, discussing with residents and sort of, but we try to find the taboo, stay away from that kind of stuff.
This list is, well, this is the only list of things to do.
It's the crucial list, yes.
I don't see, I don't see the one pump station that we pump out into the ocean on here.
No.
Oh, Neil Scott, Neil Scott, who we, this is from, with.
That one's ten years out, that is not, we upgraded that station, so the lines are what we're proposing test rate, not the station.
The lines to it?
Yeah, the lines from Forsvein line.
Going down to the plant.
That was the first of the sewer line replacement.
It's not the pump station that's the problem, it's the capacity of the pipe coming out. And that's the place where you can discharge most effectively.
And that, that was, that was a...
Just something that's...
That was the Redentment line also to the plant which is open right now. So that was part of this, and this is...
I approve that those two lines do not hold more than the one cubic volume wise, it does not.
Well, and this is the rest. This is Forsvein capacity increase from that pump station. Down south, four A, so that's the other, that's, that's the other piece of it.
That is on here?
Yes.
Which is fifteen...
It's a sewer, it's a, it's not just a detailed area. It's the two point on that, so it's a sewer line replacement.
Is it also broken into three different parts to kind of coordinate with the three years? Staggered three years? Why are there three phases on this?
Three phases are based on years to do that. So the first phase would be the first five years, the second phase would be the second.
So, so phase one includes all of it. And then also that pump station to, to the new line going to the plant. And then down to the bottom, I have two million in sewer line replacement. That's to replace other lines. That side and I. So that's sections of line, you know, I used to have Northwest Twenty-First as an example. That line needs to be replaced again, do road improvement, totally replace the sewer line. And that's a hundred thousand dollars. So each road or each one of these is going to be around that amount. So this is many lines.
Didn't we buy the back truck already?
We have a back truck, so that's a replacement.
I mean, didn't we just improve that?
No, no, that was, that was the lift truck.
Lift truck.
And the back truck. It's used, it's used constantly, it's starting to test issues. We can't be without it. By the time any of the savvies could be number two or three resolved.
Well, I think, I think part of the discussion, if I remember correctly, to separate these projects, maintenance and capacity, was thinking if we would sell it to develop a bond. Did people understand capacity, I think, to be either growing or service maintenance? And, you know, to, I think, to a point, maintenance, third, you'd think would be into your rates already and that kind of stuff. So, you know, I appreciate this, these breakdowns, this way, you know, thinking through if we do a bond, you know, how you would like. What we haven't talked about is system development, some of that funds get split in this. Especially, we've had enough surge in, so it can go towards some fancy those ones, which could filter into then some kind of projections on these worksheets. The reason we didn't have it this time is it's just one more variable. But I, knowing that there is, and we've seen outside in construction, hey, over fifteen years, you're going to see downside, so.
The last, the last ten years, it hasn't generated a lot compared to what needs to be done, hasn't generated a lot.
Well, it can be.
That changes, I mean, also.
But already, we've outdone, you know, two seventeen and twenty seventeen was certainly better than twenty-nine, twenty or two oh nine. So, you know.
We just didn't introduce it in this app because it's an unbearable.
What is your cash inflow from urban renewal back to like twenty sixteen? What were you getting a year?
Well, they were, they were helping do a few of our pump stations mainly.
I mean, what type of income did that generate from urban renewal?
I don't, I don't understand.
Well, one, you have a pump station, right? And that urban renewal money goes from urban renewal to you, and that's income to you. So it's...
That's right.
So it's close to the pump station, right? What, what I'm saying is...
That it increased our budget.
That increased your budget. So now, since you, it's just like you have a business, when, if you lose your best customer, you, you might have to make some adjustments in your business. And what I'm wondering here, the first step that I would see is to go back over your wish list and see, understand that we don't, we don't have the budget that you used to have. And our first step should be try to hold these, hold these obligations down a little bit. And then once, if you can get those so they're more livable, then we can figure out what to do with the rest.
And what we're doing is, we have twelve weeks out over a fifteen-year period. And so most of these pump stations, so in our regular operations and maintenance budget, we budget system maintenance and pump station maintenance. And that's all the pumps you're talking about, replacing pumps. We do that, you know, on a monthly basis, yearly, annual basis. But these pump station replacements are, you know, major replacements of mechanical equipment that's been there for thirty or forty years of the, you know, the actual generators and, you know, all of the controls and everything. And so these have been actually on the books since two thousand when we did the master plan date.
What would be helpful is that if there are projects of particular concern, so I know, for example, council board has expressed concern over the drying method, the final drying method to create Class A sludge, whether or not that's something we do, not do, or something else. If there are projects that you have a particular concern, we can go back through, review all the information on all of the projects. But if there's some that are more concerned to you, just, just let us know and we have to actually address. We can resolve them or we can address those specific ones.
I mean, at four point seven million dollars for that, the Class A thing, I mean, what's the cost savings or any of that? I mean, I, I know we've had discussions, I know how we've talked about before. You know, and if we have the centrifuge and it's at ten percent, I know it's going to be a cost reduction, you know, as far as...
Right, you won't be spending that two hundred thousand on titling it.
Right, so I, I mean, I know that, you know, the centrifuge is good and, you know, and I...
And that's, that's part of that, that number.
Yeah, I mean, yes, and I, I understand that. But I mean, is the four, is the, is the Class A pellet mechanism something that we have already said, yes, let's go do it?
No, no.
So we're going to ask for money, ask something like...
We're actually, we're actually working at, at tightening that number as much as we can.
Right, but I mean, is that something as council, we even decided that we want to do, but now we're presented that we're going to do it, let's get the money for it, even though we haven't decided that we're going to do it?
Let me take a step back on that. What we're, what we're presenting to you is our recommendations of what we think needs to be done. Ultimately, you get to decide and say no, yeah, yes to some, no to others. So it's not accurate to say we're going to do these. This, this is our presentation to you and now, on our recommendations, and now you decide what you want to do. And that's why for me, seeing what you're cringing on, what you're hearing no on, what you're hearing your concerns are, the most important part is that I can hit that, come back with modifications based on what.
I think another way to look at it is how much money do you think is appropriate to invest in cap, super capital in a year? This scenario is investing about one point one million a year. Maybe the projects change, maybe these aren't the right projects, but is that about the right amount to invest every year to maintain our sewer system? In the vision, what's already... Well, it's, you know, we're not talking about replacing a whole, we're talking about replacing a whole pump station or replacing a whole line, you know, what, what is the correct amount to invest in our system? Is it now?
I mean, we're, we're spending two hundred, you know, for this year, you know, it's, you know, eight, thirteen, seventeen.
We're going, we're going right, some are going on right now.
Because we've got what?
We have the, the two million for the line.
That's the service.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's how much we're paying for what we're doing. How much more are we going to invest? She's saying one point four on top of what we're doing, and on top of what we're doing is about that already. In two thousand and nineteen, it'll be one point six million dollars, you know, six hundred thousand, do you know what I mean? So.
It's not on top of though, because that's coming out of fund balance and, and SDC charges that have been built up for a long time. So it's not, it's not money that's going to be available next year that we can add to.
What we can provide you is historically what have we spent? So, so David's question is one point four million is the right amount? The answer to that is compared to what? If we've only been investing a hundred thousand dollars, that's a huge jump. But if you've already been investing one million or some other amount, so we can, we can provide that information. So let's just go back and look at our financial statements.
And we can look at what.
Go make it separate.
And we have been doing a pump station a year because we have twenty-nine pump stations in several. By the time the cycle comes around. A pump station is a good million. A full grid, you know, inside the building replacement, depending on what level and everything, it's going to be ours.
There might be some of this in there, like the pump stations that obviously should be reflected through the rates, right? But there, there might be some other things in there that you can thin down that you don't really have to have. And, and see where, I mean, we just lost our biggest customer in a sample. So that's going to have an impact, you know, so.
It's a native sum.
Yeah, they look like big amounts to me, but I'm...
And our, our previous fund is quite a few, our principal. Yeah.
And just that you should be able to not, you shouldn't have to bond for pump stations. You shouldn't be, in my opinion, I, what am I telling you anything for? But you shouldn't have to bond to get a, a pump station. That should be taken care of in your rates, I, I think, yeah, because it's predictable. You know, you're going to have, set a separate fund and one goes, oh, well, good thing we put away some each month. And we didn't have to pay any interest on that either. So there, there it goes.
Similar, similar to the back truck.
So what I'm hearing so far is there's some explanation, historical amount, things like that, I'm hearing.
That's capital improvements?
Capital improvements.
Is what you're talking about there?
Yes. Yeah, we have that. And I'm looking at, take a look again at the projects. Or come back with something that says, these are projects that we feel we have to do, we may not have to do. Again, if there are... Again, if there are some, the one project that I heard, the biggest concern is the, is the Class A sledge conversion. If there's others, let me know, and we can give a more or less detail back based on what we heard.
But if I'm reading that right, and I, I hear you, I think you're right, that, that is out here.
Year fifteen.
Fifteen, you know, ten plus years out, right?
And that gets, and that really kind of gets to the, the last thing, which is how do you want to fund these? So, for example, if you were going to say, we're going to fund all of these through rates, you're looking at twenty one million dollars, but the decisions on some of these don't have to be made for quite some time, and you end up either building up a surplus that you don't need, or you start cutting back on it. So, that's, that's the other part of it. Now, and the other, the third thing that I've been hearing so far is that, I haven't heard anybody say no to the idea of, of separating maintenance from capacity.
As, as far as what?
As, well, just, just to do that with the projects, and then second part of that question is, on the maintenance projects, do you want to deal with those through bonding, or do you want us to try and deal with those entirely through rates?
For me, I, I still can absorb this. What I'm looking at, I'm making some assumptions that these are the projects, so I'm, I'm more focused on trying to analyze the tolerance of the voter and the rate payer, you know, how much can I raise, and will they accept, and to give for, and, and where do they get it, so, because it, and again, I'm going to, it all needs to be done, sometimes certainly over fifteen years, so where do I go, and what might sell a little easier? The piece, again, is, I have no gauge of this, of rates, when we're messing with the rates, where do we fit? Because I, I just, we're low personally, so I think there's a lot of room, you know, not, it's kind of like electricity, we in Northwest enjoy low electricity rates, we in Lincoln City enjoy real low water and sewer rates, but the real world is somewhere else, and I think we ought to explain that. I mean, our, our influx of people from the valley certainly know, as much as they want to play anything, that they know it's great. But I think as we do that, especially on the sewer rates, we've got to come up with some for irrigation, or, you know, something else. I mean, the higher we get up, we've got to somehow find a way for, you know, those few people that want something up somehow. The other, the second we hear or some sort of, that a water and garden use, or, if that's a good reason, I think we're going to have to deal with that issue. Because the more water you can use in the summer, which is unfortunately our, you know, time you really don't want to use any water outside, that's where we have to have rate going, and it impacts sewer rates, and, and retirement, for instance.
I'm, I'm comparing worksheet two and worksheet three, and it appears that, in the general role, you've decided that pump stations are actually maintenance, but not, but Northwest forty, why?
Northwest forty is.
No, no, that's not, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm reading it right. Hold on, I want to talk.
Yeah. Now, okay, one caveat that I need to put in all of this, these are based upon just what I put together, I did not really consult a lot with, but there's some flexibility in this.
There's, there's something to adjust.
When do we, I'm sorry, when do we decide to replace a, a whole pump station? Is there a way we can stress those at all, by better maintenance, or?
Well, honestly, we've been doing that, I think, Holmes Road is a good example, you know, since we've been on the list for a long time, and so, we added a new generator, and we put new pumps in it to get some more years out of it, and so, we've been kind of pushing that one back on the list for a long time, but, you know, we have it at a point where, where it's working fairly well, but it's an old pump station, it's built in eighty one, it's a metal can package station, it's, has a concrete tile for wet well, and, you know, the generator and controls are in a brick building, so we reuse the building, but part of it is moving, so it's a DQ mandated, you know, you go too far as far as, you know, needing to upgrade a pump station, but you're supposed to move the controls off of the wet well. And so, that's, that's one of the critical things, and when we did our pump station evaluation back in two thousand, two thousand to two thousand four, you know, those were some of the things that, that came to the, they, they, I don't want to say the next goal, but they, they couldn't have some major problems, that's why we, we was mandated controls removed. And so, that's what we did, and twisted via, and we did that hand in part, and so, we've been addressing, you know, over the years, but until you get ready to really replace, you know, many of those parts inside, that's one of the major points for you. And we try and reuse wet wells, because they're very expensive. So, we did Lockshire Pump Station, we've, we've been trying to average a pump station here, you know, and we've done that with, with work funding, and then, and some added work, or some of it. And Esther Lee's in that one, we've put off for a long time, so they, they just start getting worn, the pipe, some of the piping, and, and mechanical parts of it, but we always try and reuse the cans, and, and you start putting those new bottles in, they're expensive.
Just trying to.
And so, yeah, so most of them, we've, we've already been pushing, pushing them off and upgrading what we can in them, and making sure that upgrades that we do carry on to the next, you know, the major upgrade, so we're not flying parts after.
Why is Esther Lee's price as much as?
It's its, it's its location and its age, and, you know, it's, it's in that flood zone, and so, it's, it's an expensive site to, to build on, and it did have two pump stations, and so, what we've done, we've tried to eliminate that, that top one, because we come up to it, so we've done some electrical, and we've almost eliminated that, that top one. It's a difficult holding spot.
Would that help the smell, and that's what you're having with that?
That, that one line, but these lines, the, the first project, with those lines, that's what, that's going to fix that.
Is there, and a way to sell what's happening? Sewers underground, nobody sees that. I know we do camera stuff, is there a way to have that be put on, and say, hey, this is what we did, this is what it looks like, and yes, it's disgusting, or whatever, but is there a way to show what we do?
Certainly, I've, I've done that quite, but, I mean, we have video of these, so we're.
And I know, but I mean, is there a way to say, hey, this is the problem, this is what it looks like?
That's got to be the pit.
And that's what it looks like afterwards, and this is why it's better for you. I mean, show what it is that we're doing, because we can't see it.
That's what Mr. Chandler and I want to do, you know, with councilors, help go out and have these meetings, and show how this sort of works, you know, in Lincoln City, what, what are the issues in your area, what improvements are included in this?
We have the TV show, and we put it up there.
Better evening meetings than lunch meetings.
Well, yeah.
That's our piss out.
But I mean. Just to show, I mean, because it's important.
That's a crazy question. So, if we figure out, you know, the threshold for the rates, that, you know, what people tolerate, and then what an obligation bond would be, are there some of those projects that we can actually push out, this is the crazy part of it, and then do a revenue bond, or whatever does he get done, or is that not making sense?
Yes, yes, you can do that, you can structure, that simply becomes a matter of timing. So, for example, if you decide that the last five years, you don't want to deal with that right now, so you deal with the first ten years, do that for your general obligation bond, there's no reason why you can't do the last five years with it rather.
But if any of those things that are absent, maybe there'll be some flood money from somewhere, you know, who knows? Opportunities for grants.
That's like the Class A, that's why it's the bottom of listening, because there's new technology, and it's out there, and costs, what we were looking at originally, and it's always been on there, we said, you know, we're researching, and we have consultants looking at it.
And I'm just thinking, would you pull some things out of this that are like that, that drops overall cost?
To the taxpayer, that's a bond.
Because I'm, I'm just kind of looking at all of this, I'm looking at this, you know, for, either way, and it's really going to be hard.
It's not a lot.
Although our rates are low, and I really appreciate that, we can't get blood from the tournament, there, people, you know, you work at these service jobs here, and they don't pay enough to, you have a real job, I can be quite, but, but I'm just saying, I mean, we can, we can compare ourselves with other places, but we better compare ourselves with the places that also have same base pay for people, because it's, it's good, it has to be paid some, but I think that would be the kind of breaking point of which way we go for now.
I think it's important that we live within our means, and, and it must be very careful to do that, that's always your first step, is, is the guy you're looking at, the mayor, which all of us, is we need to, to, to live within our means, and the, frankly, the, I, I think with a backup drive, the plant can stay where it is for a few years, you don't need to do anything right now.
Sure, when you're acting as like the plant is going to suffer, I don't understand that statement. Well, we're not, nothing in here is rebuilding a plant.
A plant, yeah, there is, there is, the station, the upgrade wastewater plant generation generator, it's not a whole new plant. Well, I'm just saying, the centrifuge for a million racks, am I at the wrong place?
The centrifuge?
The centrifuge is a second, it's a second. We put the one in, we're saying we need one when it, it's down, because you have, you have to run that forties when we, or we.
So, obviously, we have to have, well, I was talking about the wastewater treatment plant solids for Class A, four million, six hundred and seventy.
Fifteen years out.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, that one, the other.
That's a device that will turn the, the ten per, what is it, eight percent now?
It's, it's.
After the centrifuge.
It takes it from about eighteen percent.
That's the sledge.
I think, I think it would be helpful, maybe if you think about three comps, and put the possible potential mainly projects out there, which that would go into.
Right, yeah, that's not a, that's not a yes right now.
That's not a yes, no.
Well, that's what we were talking about earlier, are we giving the money to say things that we haven't even voted on yet?
So, so what I did with this, I separated a second centrifuge from, from the Class A dryer, but the Class A dryer has been depending on, on which type of scenario we go with the plant.
Did we get the first one used?
It's on, it's online, and it's being, and we brought it online just at the nick of time.
And then what's the savings, estimated savings from, we haven't seen those savings yet?
There are no savings. It's a plain operation. It's a, it's part of the, so, so we spent the money on the building, the centrifuge, the piping, and then we have two hundred thousand in our budget to haul sledge, and that two hundred thousand is now hauling the drive, sledge to, it's hauling to the dump.
So, we're not using any, it's, because we just, we gotta take, we gotta take that.
Essentially balanced.
Okay.
Essentially balanced.
But we're not worried about where we're going to put it, it eases us, because those files, those file sales feels more available, so we're like, those papers.
That are.
But we use, we, yeah, I mean, you can walk on them.
So, because we're talking about it, we have the tree of a plant solids, Class A, and then where on here is the centrifuge, the second one?
Let me go to the T P solids again, fourth one down, third one down.
Oh, yeah, centrifuge, okay, thanks.
It came to five, five million, seven hundred and forty thousand with the two, with the two of them combined.
Right, but we're saying now that we have that Class A can go on a whole nother.
Is there, and that's not something, I mean, we're going to talk about that again, right?
Oh, absolutely. We're, we're working on scenarios right now.
Right, I mean, because we can sell it, or the product afterwards, or we can use it, or whatever, I mean, all the benefits.
As long as you didn't have to haul it, you know, then you eliminate the two hundred thousand.
Right, but two hundred thousand over.
Listen, I'm just saying that, okay, that's about five thousand dollars almost, five million dollars, so that drops all of this down to something, so maybe this goes on the potential, maybe, maybe not, other bond if we need it out there, not, I mean.
So, so, what I heard from you is exactly what Council Anton is talking about, we will create a third column that says, pull these out and deal with them down the road. This is a good example, one, if we're down the road, and thirteen years from now, and everything looks fine, we don't need it, we just keep going. If we find that we do, and all that really is our, is how we pay for it, because if we find that all of a sudden we have to do that, we have to get it done within a year, unless our fund balance is really built up, we have to.
And it's a good example of how things change, and so, we don't know yet, and, and that, that reduces the.
My third. So, this is just, this isn't particularly well thought out, I'm just throwing it out. We got like six million bucks in pump stations, something like that, going, and, yeah, we, those, we really need to make sure, and maybe, you know, we're not, we haven't had those assimilating to, so, what if you, just the lowest incremental rates we could have on our, on what we're charging for water or sewer, to create a, a special fund to handle those pump stations, and it would be easy to sell, you guys want your sewer pump, and we have to have thirty of them, so that's sale minus three or something, but that might give you the money to, to deal with the pump stations as they come along, while you can help, you know, for rather cost of operations in the line, it buys you some time, and it protects the public, and a one percent or whatever it is increase on water sewer would be negligible and defendable, and would sit down on time, just a thought, if you could back on.
So, in a way, from, you know, finding another way to pay for something, yesterday, Bill Hall, and we have talked about it before, the construction excise tax, hasn't been implemented, and the last thing he said, he had eighty-five applications before the new year, which is double more than the last, you know, whatever, pre-boom, pre-two thousand eight. So, I mean, if there's something that's there, and that's something that we can talk about, I mean, if people are really going to build, and this is for, hey, it's going to, it's going to go, let's put it on that part, you know, we can, I don't know what the stipulations are, I know a percentage of that, three percent has to go to the state, whatever, I don't remember now, the construction excise tax has regulations for it to be used, but that could be something else that could fund more, more, right, to this sewer, I mean, if we're going to have more people, let's have that be also.
Is that what your system dollar charge is for?
And part of, no, it's a separate, separate something else.
And take away from housing, right?
No.
You want to part of that, you want to take housing from.
Come on, I, I don't want to take away from anybody else, but I'm just saying, yeah, and I'm just saying, it's a, something that doesn't exist, in a way that could help supplement parts of something to lessen the burden of those that are here, but, I mean, I'm just, hey, it's something that we haven't talked about.
Didn't we cut system and develop water and sewer by like forty percent?
Forty, two percent. If, if we look at rates, I mean, I look at a sheet fifteen scenario, and instead of making it extend, the years we've talked about, five, ten, fifteen, is there a way you can not look at rate, you don't even put it on the chartless, consider the first ten years, what way, because it seems, just as optional, maybe as, as, yeah, mentioning that last five years would be another segue into something else, and the rates may not be enough to maintain us through a certain period.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can look at that scenario as well.
If we did a five million dollar less bond also, it would lessen everything also.
Yeah, that makes a big difference.
You know, so there's those numbers also.
Maybe, maybe.
She's crazy.
You know, I, I'm, I'm thinking you go to the voters once for children, and then I'd, I agree, right, I'd like to stagger, but, and that's what we did with Urban Reuel, was four to six million, so to speak, and then when we needed it, we went for a new bond. What if, what happens if you go to the voters, you get the, for rounding purposes, twenty million bond approved, and you do a stagger, and you never go to, you know, you only do the first eight million or whatever, five million, again, tied to the actual work that could get done that year, because that's got to be figured into, over that five year period. And we decide, you don't, we don't need the last ten million. Is that, are we paying upfront to, the voting cost doesn't change any difference, we've not underwriting any, we're not really underwriting twenty million dollars worth of bonds, so you're just paying for the, the actual smaller bond when we go to the mark, right?
Yeah, when we, when we assess tax, property taxes to pay, pay the bonds, it's based on what is our actual bond payment going to be for the next year. So if you don't issue the bond, you don't assess taxes.
So I guess then looking at this, these scenarios, and again, it's probably just what you were talking about, you could run all sorts of different scenarios of, of trying to get a sense for the, maybe we have eight years first, which is just, when you're running on the scenario with the split out, is the debt service on the twenty one million, or is it on the seven million?
It, it depends, the stagger one, is, is based on.
The smaller amount.
Where, where, what's your fifteen, or twenty decade?
So over the, over the.
It's based together.
But I shortened the term on those two.
Yeah, but see, I, I look at that, and I, I don't think you can do fifteen million dollars of project in eight years. And I guess that's what I was getting to.
It's two million. Less than two million a year?
Well.
Yeah, I remember turning a couple over.
God, we've got a plan, but, you know, I was thinking back to the plan.
Sure.
Okay. That's why I got to.
We would want it, we would want to stagger, we would want to stagger when we actually issued the bonds, though, I mean, I would, I don't think we'd ever want to look at doing twenty one million dollars bond in one year, because we could possibly spend that well.
Right, and that's what I was getting at, we're not, we're not going to take that money in banks.
Especially if you're giving tax exempt, it's a time frame, it's three years, you're around, and the timeframe, you have to have a majority of this spent to keep your taxes in status. It's just going to be, but this is just more, this is a gazillion scenarios we're creating. We really appreciate it. Design one year.
I did, I did, I gave him a spreadsheet, and he took off from there.
President, we were planning on finishing at seven thirty. And I was not planning on bringing up the second part tonight, because I, I guess this would take the full two hours, which are additional cash for projects. I will send that information to you, and we'll talk about it later.
This, this was helpful, so. I, I just need to, seriously, think about it, but my point from coming will be on the side of, you know, what is it all this, and then back in with what kind of projects.
Not to forget the irrigation situation, if you'd like, or maybe that.
We do have irrigation meters.
And what are those costs?
Well, you know, if I did such meters, five hundred thousand dollars, that would almost, it's almost not worth it. So it's something you'd.
And it hasn't been, but now maybe it will, if you start the rate, and after your sewer.
The rate, could, could a human go off of least water treatment capacity against water consumption, and see the difference?
You have people.
So, but I mean, I'm just, with, see, we're such a screwy, you know, it's with you, because with the.
The second columns are, you know, they don't even use your base rate.
And then they get charged the base rate, and then not using it, so it helps us, so it's a.
That's probably another, we can bring it back.
Yeah, because it's also, but it's also something. Yeah, but it's also something for them, too, you know, like, there, it's no, there's no consumption, you know?
You have to take a use of the machine.
I understand, I'm not saying don't charge them at all, but, anyway.
Well, that's all.
That's another one.
Thank you, thank you.
Brian, I.
No, no, I got to tell you.
To get to.
He brought roll leaves.
Have a good time running through these scenarios.
You'll have this in your action.
What happened?
Yeah, so much of the, some of the major line.